Let us pray. Almighty God, we come to you today with thankful hearts, thanking you for the many blessings that we have received. We ask that you go with us now, give us wisdom and knowledge, and let us, oh Lord, have compassion. We pray for the administration, we pray for the city council, all the workers and employees of the city, that you will guide and protect them. These things I ask in Christ's holy name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Counselman Flurry.
Present.
Counselman Everson.
Here.
Counselman Jenkins. Counselman Corbin.
Present.
Counselman Corbin.
Present.
Counselman Levin.
Here. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference?
Set.
They're moved by Councilman Everson and second by Councilman Corbin. Approve the minutes and, along with the special...
Special minutes, yes. Special meeting.
Motion carries with five or two out. Does any council member have any awards or recognitions or special gifts? Counselman Corbin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will announce one more time, there is a District D candidate forum this evening at 6:00 PM, Grace Community Methodist Church, 9400 LRV Road. So for the folks who are interested in what the District D candidates have to say, encourage you to be there at 6:00 PM tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No other councilmen? So Mayor Tyler, you have any awards or recognitions you'd like?
I have some announcements.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson and members of the council and to our audience. I'm pleased to announce that the City of Shreveport has received the Government Finance Officers Association's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its current budget. Also, Mrs. Sharrika Fields-Jones, Assistant Chief Administrative Officer, was awarded with a certificate of recognition for budget presentation. Also, our thirteen deployed firefighters to South Carolina returned Monday afternoon after a fourteen day deployment, and we want to say thank you to those first responders for helping those persons in South Carolina who really needed that help. And they did do quite a number of rescues. I won't try to read them all, but we are just very, very, very pleased that we have such a fire department that's able to go across the country and help others. Fire Prevention Week is October 7th through 13th, 2018. We will have several schools touring fire stations. Fire prevention and public education will be delivering programs, and we will have a smoke alarm campaign also. The theme this year is "Look, Listen, Learn: Be Aware, Fire Can Happen Anywhere." Look for places fire can start, listen for the sound of the smoke alarm, learn two ways out of each room. And as you know, we had one or two fire fatalities this year, so we are ramping up our education piece to try to make sure that our citizens know that we want them to look at safety precautions when it comes to fire prevention, and also that they can get free smoke detectors if they'll just let us know. A next announcement, I want to remind everyone of the upcoming Small Business Summit to be held this Friday, September 28th, 8:30 to 1:00 PM, at the Shreveport Convention Center. This event will be hosted by the City of Shreveport and Louisiana Economic Development Department. Our Governor, John Bell Edwards, will be there to help us open up the event. And so far, we have more than four hundred small businesses from around the state registered, and more than sixty vendors scheduled to be in attendance. These businesses will get the information needed to prepare them to be ready to do business with municipalities by 2019. For more information, please call Ms. Karen Barnes at (673) 5060. Today, we learned about some extensions for our restored Louisiana Homeowners Assistance Program. Of course, we're talking about the flood that happened in March of 2016, or August of 2016, for those down south. There is a new deadline, and it's been extended to October 19th. At first, it was October 1st. But now, October 19th, for those homeowners who have never tried to apply, you can apply, but you must do your surveys first by October 19th, and then you have to complete the application by November 16th of this year. And for those who have done the surveys, you will need to complete the application process by November 16th, 2018. And of course, if you have already received an SBA loan to help you in this endeavor from the flood of March 2016 here in our area, you may apply for these funds, and you will receive funding for what you've already done. And if you'll call the number (866) 735-2001, you'll get more information about what to do to be able to get some of those funds to pay back your SBA loan. We'll be sending something out, press release. I just ran back in from the meeting in Monroe and wanted to make sure we could get some of that information out today. Okay, get ready for National Night Out next Tuesday, October 2nd. It's the annual community building campaign that fosters the type of police-community partnerships that are essential to making our neighborhoods safer places to live. The deadline to register is this Friday, September 28th, and we'll be sure to get the council members a list of the parties so you can attend those within your district.
Can we also get surrogate council members? I'm always glad at what a success that program is, but there is never a slight possibility that I could even make it to a quarter of them. But that's a good problem, isn't it?
It is a good problem.
It's good to know we got people participating.
All right. Okay, so we've got three more. We had a lot of announcements today, Mr. Chairman. The City's annual Women Motivating Women Conference will be held on October 4th at the Shreveport Convention Center. It begins at 8:00 AM. We will honor unsung heroes who worked for the city and trailblazers who were some of the first women in their roles. The event will also include a panel discussion with some of the women who were recognized last week for the Virginia She/He Most Influential Women Award. Later that same day, October 4th, the city will hold another job fair from 11:00 AM until 6:00 PM, also at the Convention Center. We continue to serve our citizens with numerous events, and this weekend will kick off one of the city's largest festivals with Red River Revel on Saturday, September 29th. Please tell your neighbors and friends to go out and support this event. Thank you so much. That's the end of the announcements for today.
Counselman Jenkins. Counselman Flurry had a question first, though.
No, that's okay. I'll go after her.
I'll happily get first.
Well, while the mayor's speaking, I wanted to say, she didn't say anything about Thursday night, the 27th. Providence House will be having a graduation, and it'll be at Frost Chapel at First Baptist Church, and the Honorable Ollie Spearman Tyler will be the guest speaker. And so I'd like to be sure all the council members know that we are invited.
Thank you, sir.
All right. And I see a posse from another event that's coming up soon. I believe that we have another council member who might be recognizing them.
So if I could ask Gregory Callenberg to come up and, obviously, as, with the rest of the posse, as Jeff returned them, give us an update about what we've got going on next week.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Jenkins, and thank you guys for having us. Before I get started, I was going to let these guys introduce themselves really quickly and tell you what sector of the massive gloriousness that is Prize Fest that they watch over. And why don't we start with Amy?
Amy O'Callaghan, logistics.
Sabrina Adsit, VIP, sponsors, marketing and PR.
Stephen Knight, food prize.
Melissa Brandon, food prize.
Chris Lyon, film prize.
So this is just part of the team that puts on Prize Fest, which with, you know, again, with all due respect to Red River Revel, where they are one of the largest festivals in the city, we are one of the most amazing festivals on the planet. So, again, it's, thank you. So I just want to just kind of give you a quick overview of where we've been and where we're going this year, because it's important that you are all there and supporting what has become an amazing sort of bright spot on the calendar. So this year, we have, of course, expanded out to the Film, Food, and Music Prizes, so all three of those will be going on same time, October 3rd through the 7th. If you go to prizefest.com, you can get a view of the schedule. But what is important is where we have sort of been in getting to this point. Over the last seven years, the Film Prize in particular has yielded about $12 million in economic development. If you don't know the Film Prize, we invite filmmakers from all over the country to come to Shreveport, Louisiana to shoot productions. So what do they do? They come to town, they stay in our hotels, they eat at our restaurants, they hire our local workers. But what's even better than that, and I was here yesterday when you guys were talking about workforce development, is that these guys are training locals to do what they do. And as a result, this year, we have our largest number of local filmmakers that we've had since year one. Is that correct, Chris? And what is interesting about those nine filmmakers, nine? Okay, fourteen filmmakers, is that not only were those people trained up by the filmmakers that came from outside of us, but that four of those filmmakers, four of those filmmakers, if you had gone back five years, they would have been out-of-town filmmakers. And what that means is, is that these filmmakers have moved to Shreveport, Louisiana because of the Film Prize. So when you start talking about workforce development, you start talking about the importance of attracting young, energetic people to this place, the Film Prize is walking the walk and talking the talk. And alongside of that, right, alongside of that, we are growing the music scene, and we're growing the food scene. The work that Stephen and Melissa are doing in helping the culinary culture rise, and the work that Josh Mitchell's doing in helping the music scene grow here, is extremely important if we're going to build a bright future for this town, for all of us, and for our children, right? So all that said, we would love to invite you guys all down to Film, Music, and Food Prizes collectively, Prize Fest, October 3rd through the 7th. We want you to be there, we want you cheering with us, we want you raising a glass and toasting what is an amazing festival and an amazing city. And can we do a little? Okay, on three, ready, ready? One, two, three. Viva Prize Fest! All right, we have some swag for you guys, too. Thank you so much. Do you guys have any questions? Any questions for me? Is that...
Starts Wednesday, it's the date that's...
Yes, so Wednesday, it starts with Come and Get It. Hey, Stephen, can I get...
A week from tomorrow.
Yes, so it starts Wednesday with Come and Get It, which is a wine and food festival that we do, where we have celebrity chefs come from all over the country. We connect them with local chefs. We also are going to be doing alongside the Food Prize events, we're doing a mixology, where we're bringing mixologists who are local, and then on Saturday, we're doing Shreveport's first Gospel Brunch Fest with Pastor Brady Blade's Gospel Choir and Regina Charbonneau's World Famous Biscuits.
Where is that going to be?
All Food Prize events are at the Remington. Everything else is centered around downtown. We show films at the Robinson Film Center, we show it at Art Station, Scottish Rite is now one on our docket, which is, it's fascinating because you really get to see, you know, not a lot of people get to go see a movie in the Scottish Rite, which was one of the original uses for it. So people now make it a major part of their agenda to go to that venue and utilize it the way it was always meant to be utilized. Any other questions? Well, thank you so mu... I'm sorry, yes?
I just have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Callenberg. I want to just say thank you for the energy, the enthusiasm you and your team bring to Shreveport, Louisiana, and thank you for dispelling the idea that we have nothing to do in Shreveport and nothing to offer. I would be remiss if I didn't say that, but I also will say thank you for attracting people to come back to Shreveport and to help build businesses and small businesses and large businesses. So thank you so much for all that you're doing in Shreveport. You are one of the largest on the planet. Thank you.
Yeah, on the planet, the best on the planet. And ladies and gentlemen, thank these guys, too. This is the best team on earth, as far as I know, to be working with. So thank you so much. We hope we see you at the prize.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Grant.
Any member?
Let me ask, is there an official kickoff for the National Night Out this year?
Chief, can you come up? Abiel, whomever. Is there an official kickoff, and where is it?
Yeah, we haven't decided where the kickoff is. Typically, the end of this week, once all the applications come in, we will sort through those and then get those to Mayor Tyler and Chief Crawford, then work to make a decision where we're going to host it.
I know, and it's a tradition that we had, and it will be just, the location is to be determined.
Yes, the application period is still open for folks to send in their applications, and we're still getting those in. And typically, if we do as we normally do, we'll get a lot more applications toward the end of this week as those things wrap up. So once we have what we believe to be the bulk of those, then we'll work with Mayor Tyler and Chief Crawford to go ahead and select a location where we'll kick it off.
Okay.
Thank you. And we do try to, we try to, you know, rotate it so we won't host it at the same place.
I understand.
Okay.
Does any council member have any concerns relative to property standards? Seeing none, Mr. Green, no. Thank you for your service, sir. Mr. Claw. Master Plan Committee report.
Good afternoon. We've been working with the Chair of the Master Plan Committee, and we have a meeting scheduled for next month. And after the meeting we have next month, we will have more to report to you at your next meeting. I wanted to take this opportunity, though, to share with you, because quite often, we don't get to be a part of the announcements, and we have a very, very important conference that's going to be hosted in Shreveport, and we work very hard to ensure that this conference is the month of October because of all the wonderful things that happen in Shreveport during the month of October. We're trying very hard to promote Shreveport. The Louisiana chapter of the American Planning Association is a organization of planners, and we have planners from all around the state. We have four sections of the state. We have the metro New Orleans section, we have the Capitol Baton Rouge section, we have the Acadiana section, and we have the North Louisiana section. Of the four sections, the one section that gets the less attention is the North Louisiana section, because all of the attention goes to the southern part of the state, because most of the planners are in the southern part of the state. You have the University of New Orleans, where there's the School of Planners, School of Planting that's kicking out planners every semester, and North Louisiana is left out. We have an extremely wonderful conference planned for Shreveport. It will be at Sam's Town, and it will go from October 3rd, 4th, and 5th. And during those three days, you will be able to, if you're so inclined and so interested, learn everything you always want to know about planting. During that week, for the awards luncheon, the keynote speaker will be Lieutenant Governor Billy Nunn. Yes, sir. For the keynote of the conference, the speaker will be Mr. Paul Farmer. Mr. Farmer is an original resident of the City of Shreveport. He has ascended to heights unimaginable in the planting field. He retired from being the CEO, executive for the American Planning Association in Chicago. So we just wanted to share with you that those events will be happening. We encourage you to come. Mr. Farmer will be talking about good planning equals good governance, and good governance equal good planning. So those are things that possibly elected officials, not politicians, would be interested in hearing, how these things interact and come together for productivity, economic development, and all kind of wonderful things that help cities grow. So we just invite you to come to the conference and be a part of this wonderful occasion, and it's sort of hard to follow the wonderful people from Film Fest, but viva planning.
So Alan, you're telling me that we can go to the Revel and to the Prize Fest and talk to a bunch of policy nerds, all in one downtown?
One downtown.
That is, you have just made an ideal weekend for me.
It's going to be fantastic. We're really excited about it. We worked extremely hard to bring all this together so that people from South Louisiana will see all the excitement that happens in North Louisiana.
That's fantastic. Good weekend to do it.
By the way, will Councilman Flurry be giving any lectures? He's quite knowledgeable about planning, so he might participate.
They were worried he might cut their budget.
Now we have an opportunity to reconvene Councilman Flurry that our budget doesn't need to be cut.
So in regards to getting tickets to the featured events, how do we do that?
If you're interested in any of the events, the tickets for single events are $35. If you want to come for a whole day, it costs $75. If you want to attend the entire conference, the cost is $225.
In regards to this, Nunn guesser awards banquet...
Right. $35.
$35.
Yes.
And could you make sure we receive a copy of that agenda?
Okay, we'd be happy to. We will send another copy. I think we've sent a copy to the council office, but if not, we will send another copy so that they can disseminate it out to each council person, the entire program, and the registration forms.
I did, I got it. We probably just...
I just wanted y'all to know, I did not want to ignore or leave y'all out of this. I wanted to make sure that you all were a part of it.
So how many attendees are you looking for?
Generally, the planning conference, even in New Orleans, will attract 150 planners. It's basically just professional planners that come to the conference. Like you were saying, for keynote events or special events, we can go up to 200 to 250.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you so much.
Did you want to be added on to the agenda every time so you can come up and give us some kind of a... We can do that. I know you said you want to...
It's up to you, sir.
We don't have that much from us, so I just wanted to make sure.
It's up to you. I will come with smiling faces each time you allow me to come.
We'll do that, then. Thank you.
So let me be clear, Mr. Chairman. The Master Plan Committee meeting is scheduled?
Correct, yes. So we had actually originally scheduled it for that same Friday that their conference is starting, but it also was the same date as the Intergovernmental Committee. So we've adjusted that date and moved it up to this Friday, as long as that works for all the committee members. So I know that Adam Bailey right now is doing a poll about that, and if it seems to work for most members, they're going to do a public notice tomorrow.
Okay.
We all did get the...
Yes, I'm sorry. Budget actual financial report. Everybody has received it electronically. If you have any questions, please refer it to me, and I will get it to the Audit and Finance Committee.
No public hearing today? Is there any legislation to be added today?
No.
Miss R. Definitely not, that's not Miss R.
All right. Would you continue with the requested speak?
Public comments, certainly. So we'll start with Shay Swartent. Apologize if I butchered the name, but... If you would, please state your name for the record and your address. You have three minutes.
Shay Swartout, 1303 Lyon Avenue is my address, I work. I don't give out my home address. I'm the State Director for Center for Behavioral Health. We're an opiate addiction treatment center. We have locations in Shreveport and Monroe. We've been partnered with Philadelphia Center for several years to offer free HIV testing to all the patients beginning treatment for pain pill and heroin addiction here in Shreveport. You can imagine that that would be especially important, considering opiate addiction is the fast track to IV drug use. I'd like to urge you all to strongly consider the needle exchange program Philadelphia Center is here to talk about today, really for three reasons. Firstly, as a treatment provider in this area, I've had the unique perspective, I have a unique perspective to offer. We're often taking in people that are not even really diagnosed, mostly untreated, with any range of communicable diseases related to their history of IV use. So in support of what Philadelphia Center is trying to do with the needle exchange program, we polled our patients to ask them, you know, what were you doing before you got to treatment with the IV, the needles you were using? The results were astonishing. Patients are telling us they were throwing them on the side of the road, they were flushing them down the toilet, they put them in a garbage can and broke the needle off. We know that these are not safe methods. This isn't just a needle exchange program, it's a public safety concern. Beyond that, with the needle exchange program, I've spent eight years fighting the opiate epidemic here in Caddo, and I can tell you, there's no easy way to reach people that are addicted to drugs. You can't pull the billboard up, you can't text them, you can't really Facebook, they're not easy to access. Needle Exchange is a point of contact for people addicted to opiates, and other drugs, too. The easiest way to get treatment information into somebody's hand that's using drugs is in a needle exchange program. It's a direct referral to treatment. We have free treatment right now, and we don't know how to tell people because we don't know how to reach them. I think it's a public safety concern. I think it's a great way to refer people into a treatment program and make contact with them. If they feel safe going, and they don't feel like they're going to be arrested when they get there. And I think it makes my job easier as a clinician. I'm a licensed professional counselor. A lot of the patients that we're treating come into our program with these untreated, sometimes undiagnosed communicable diseases they picked up with IV use. They don't even know they have them. So we spend the first two to three months connecting them to medical care rather than getting into the therapeutic process and helping them with their sobriety. Not to mention how discouraging it is that they've done all this damage before they get to us because we didn't have programs like needle exchange, and it's very hard for us to help them. It's very discouraging when someone decides they want to get sober, they want to seek treatment. I'm sorry, I ran out of time. That's making me nervous. They want to seek treatment, they want to get sobriety, but they get into the program and they're discouraged by hepatitis C, HIV. What's the point? Why should I put all my effort into recovery if I'm going to die anyway, or I'm so sick? Sorry. That's all. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
But can we yield and let her finish first?
I'll second him.
Okay. Seventy-nine percent, that we allow her to finish her statement, then I have a question.
How long we give her?
Two minutes.
Two minutes?
Sure.
Finish your statement, then I'm going to ask you a question.
Sure. So I think it's really discouraging to patients when they get in and find all these medical issues, because they want to give up on their sobriety when they just made the decision to try to get sober. And so we're fighting tooth and nail to get them connected to medical care. I just think needle exchange would help us avoid a lot of those problems before we get them connected to treatment.
So without, you know, getting confidential, give me a profile of your average patient that you see in your center.
Our average patient actually looks like you guys. If I were to hold up a mirror right now, you would look like our average... It's very discouraging when someone decides they want to get sober, they want to seek treatment. I'm sorry, I ran out of time. That's making me nervous. They want to seek treatment, they want to get sobriety, but they get into the program and they're discouraged by hepatitis C, HIV. What's the point? Why should I put all my effort into recovery if I'm going to die anyway or I'm so sick? Sorry. That's all. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
But can we yield and let her finish first?
I'll second him.
Okay. Seventy-nine percent that we allow her to finish her statement, then I have a question.
Give them another... How long we give her?
Two minutes.
Two minutes?
Sure.
Finish your statement, then I'm going to ask you a question.
Sure. So, I think it's really discouraging to patients when they get in and find all these medical issues because they want to give up on their sobriety when they just made the decision to try to get sober. And so, we're fighting tooth and nail to get them connected to medical care. I just think needle exchange would help us avoid a lot of those problems before we get them connected to treatment.
So, without, you know, getting confidential, give me a profile of your average patient that you see in your center.
Our average patient actually looks like you guys. If I were to hold up a mirror right now, you would look like our average patient.
Okay.
It's people that are homeless, it's people that are managers, it's people that run businesses. I mean, it's, this addiction, now, this is opiate addiction, not all addictions, but it doesn't discriminate.
Okay. So, that, I mean, you just, that's not one profile of it all. It's the community.
Pain pill addiction is everybody.
Okay. And you, what's your relationship with the Philadelphia Center as you stand now? I know you guys coordinate some things. What specifically do you guys work with the most?
So, every patient that comes into our program gets a referral to Philadelphia Center for free HIV testing, and they take it from there. They also come out on-site with their mobile testing unit and do testing about every one to two to three months, at least once a quarter, we get them out. That way, if we have patients that can't get to Philadelphia Center or they're not comfortable kind of making that step, they can get tested in their mobile testing unit in our parking lot.
Okay. So, some of your patients or clients would be directly benefited from this program?
Some of our patients would have directly benefited before they started treatment.
Before they started treatment?
Right.
Okay, that's interesting.
Right.
And I missed this. When you say you polled some of your patients, and the result was, what exactly was the question that you asked them to poll them?
So, we have a certain number of our patients that would have had a history of IV use previous to treatment.
Okay.
And so, we polled, we surveyed those patients anonymously and said, we asked a lot of questions about what type of things would you have wanted in a kit if, when you were still using, so we can make something that people are actually going to use.
Okay.
And then, we also asked, what were you doing with your needles when you were done with them during your, in your using days?
Okay.
And that's where we got answers like flush them down the toilet or, you know, break them in half and throw them in a trash can or...
I mean, that's, we heard that yesterday. I think that's important to know. But you, from your experiences as a practitioner, feel comfortable that this will be a benefit to this city?
I do.
Okay.
I do. I think it's, and not just for the patients. I mean, obviously, that's where my heart is, but, I mean, if people are throwing needles down on Clyde Fant and on the stoner trails where I run, I mean, that's where we have Mardi Gras, that's where our kids play, that's where we have public events. I mean, it's a public safety concern, too, not just a treatment concern.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Dr. Robert Darrow, please, once again. Please state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes, sir.
I'll be short. Robert Darrow, 3920 Gilbert Drive. Chairman, Mayor Tyler, and Councilmen ladies. I am President of the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Center. We've served this community for three long decades, not only Shreveport, but the nine parish regions of Northwest Louisiana. I'm here to express my positive feelings about this needle exchange program. I think it's a moral and ethical thing to do. Not only will it improve safety issues in our city, but it will also affect needle exchange. As you know, syringes have to be prescribed now, and many of our poor citizens do not have the money to go to the doctor or they're not connected in the system to get prescriptions for needles. And so, folks who are abusing drugs will reuse the needles for months, if not longer, and they also share needles. And this spreads these deadly diseases into our community. And I just ask you that you please, if you haven't already, to look at the stats and the empirical studies that prove this out. There's a reason why this program is in every major city in the world, and we think that Shreveport is progressive enough and cares enough about its citizens who are down and out to give them a hand until they can... And of course, like alcohol or any drugs, a person cannot really get effective treatment until they want to. And so, while they're down and out and using drugs, I hope that we will be able to at least provide them clean needles and prevent the spread of communicable diseases. Thank you.
Doctor, let me ask you, doctor, and thank you for what you've done with the Philadelphia Center. We all proud of that institution.
Thank you, sir.
But in regards to the, it's categorized as a needle exchange program, but we heard yesterday from Chip that it may not be necessary for them to turn in a dirty needle. What incentives can we present that will ensure that we would collect more dirty needles than we give out clean needles?
Mr. Bradford, if I may, I would like to defer to another speaker who's going to come up, one of our employees, Chip, and he can provide you with those details.
Okay, Doc. Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Darrow, unfortunately, I do not have Chip as a, with the request to speak, but since he was mentioned, I'm welcome to come up at this point and say a few words. We heard some very informative things yesterday.
And Chip, did y'all have the slide presentation today?
Yes, we do have it.
I was going to call him up during the comments of the actual, you know, ordinance the way we did yesterday. However, if it's appropriate now, and it seems like it is, if y'all don't mind, I would like to ask him to go ahead and share that information.
I'd like them to respond to that inquiry. Is that okay? Proud to that.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Mayor, Chair, Council, it's nice to be here again. I just saw you yesterday, but it's nice to be back.
It was great hearing you yesterday.
Thank you. The exchange program, it's a little misleading what we are going to be rolling out as a syringe service program. Exchange means a one-for-one, and that's not always going to be the case. And the reason for that is, we see, this program's going to only be perhaps once a month, twice a month, every other week for a couple of hours. And so, we're going to see people with different needs coming in, particularly at first, and we don't want to limit what we give them if they have the need for it, because a lot of people, particularly at first, are going to be coming in and they're going to be getting syringes for themselves and possibly for people that they do the drugs with. And so, we don't want them to wind up being in the same situation that we're trying to prevent by limiting them to one-on-one per se. We're going to try to stick to a fairly close proximity. They're going to need to bring needles in, but we don't have a matching system for that reason.
I see. Okay. I understand.
Does that pretty much answer?
Yeah, I mean, you, yesterday, you know, when I asked you, well, if they don't have a needle, you say they'll supply them one.
And I believe you asked me, yeah, I believe you asked me that yesterday, if we would give them a needle, and I did affirm.
I was trying to see if there's a way we can create an incentive that they would bring the needles so they wouldn't be disposed all over the place.
Right, and that is the incentive for them to bring in. We're going to be offering them the containers and the kits and...
That's right.
Yeah. So, we're going to be having them, we're going to be not only teaching them how to dispose of them, but also how to bring them into us and have us dispose of them.
Still have the short containers, yeah.
Because we do have a service, a professional service that picks up from our facility and takes these needles and destroys them. So, that's why we want them to bring them into us.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Did you want to do something else?
Yeah, Chip, did you have the presentation you wanted to give?
Yes.
They just had a short slide presentation that gives some of the facts about this, and if now is appropriate, then I think we might as well just ask them to go ahead and do that.
It's very short, so we'll go through it fairly quickly. Again, this is a harm reduction for the entire community, and as I spoke yesterday, I mentioned that all of our numbers that we have in this PowerPoint did come from the CDC. And we can start at any place on this circle, but we're looking at the syringe service program, increasing entry into treatment, which is what we just heard from our previous speaker. It does, it has been shown to increase the entry because we have them come in repeatedly if necessary. We try and get them comfortable with us, let them know that they can trust us, that we're there for them, and we get them and we try and get them into treatment and testing. We are going to reduce the needle stick injuries. It has been by the CDC, this is nationwide now, one in three first responders during their career will suffer a needle stick from a dirty needle. Also, reducing overdose deaths. I was looking at, looking up some figures. I had promised Mr. Flurry that I would email him some more precise numbers for Shreveport, and I do have, in 2016, we had 25 opioid deaths in the Caddo Parish total. So, we are seeing a need for this. In 2015, 3,600 HIV were diagnosed, and they're also IV drug users. This is a big pathway for our STIs and our HIV infections. One in three age 18 to 30 have Hep C, so that's another big indicator. SSPs, the syringe service program save healthcare dollars. The cost of treating one person with HIV over their lifetime is approximately $400,000. IV drug users are five times more likely to enter treatment if there is a syringe program available to them, and that is also a non-judgmental space where they can come in and feel comfortable. Safe disposal, of course, of used needles, and linkage to care again, and testing for HIV and STIs, which keeps them healthy and keeps our community healthy. Also, access to condoms and educational material will also be available to them. In addition to that, I was going to, this also goes back to yesterday with Mr. Flurry's question. He'd asked how many clients we know of. Excuse me, and I did send, did you get the email?
I did.
Okay. We do have currently 36 clients in case management that have indicated that is a high-risk factor for them, which is IV drug use. Thirty-six, that's quite a large number to us. I mean, anything over one to me is a large number, but 36 is what we have currently, and those are the ones that are identifying. We have probably many more than that. That is the tip of the iceberg. You'll find many times IV drug users are not going to come right out and write that down on a form usually or admit it. So, I think we're looking at higher numbers than what you're, what I'm actually telling you. We just don't know about them. And that pretty much concludes the PowerPoint. These are our numbers up through 2017, so this is fairly recent information.
Well, thank you so much for that additional information, and again, for the benefit of the public, we were able to hear a little bit of this information yesterday. This is, you know, a piece of legislation that I'm proposing to introduce today. We did have some discussion that, now, while I have, you know, the Philadelphia Center is in my district, the Center for Behavioral Health is in my district, I'm somewhat familiar with this issue and have been able to become more familiar with it in the process of drafting this. But we do want to give the opportunity for other council members to learn a little bit more, and, you know, that's part of what the public process is about. So, we'll be introducing it today. I'm expecting to kind of automatically do a brief postponement so that we can have time for everybody to kind of look into it, and we may redirect that to a committee for some further review. But this is a program that, you know, I just can immediately see the benefits, and then the research that I've been able to do since we've been working on this provides a really big benefit to the public health. And so, absolutely hope that everybody will consider it and really appreciate the, those who have been working diligently to get this information out to us.
Thank you.
And then, last public comment, Sammy Mears, referring to a piece of tabled legislation.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana 71101. Once again, before, I did say congratulations to David Wayne Thomas for a great 28-winning Senior Golf Open championship, and also his PGA career and everything else that goes with that. I was very happy for him, as I still am today. And then, I also want to compliment the fact that we all want to be winners and champions. That's what we're here for, aren't we? Nobody should be the left outer. And also, I would like to say that I've been keeping this really quiet for quite a while, but it now makes 30 years that I have given to MDA, and I feel like I'm kind of a champion myself in a way, because for 30 years now, I have helped them. I don't know how much total altogether in those years that I've given them, but I will continue doing that as, I feel like I'm a champ as well. And because Florence has done such a good job on the Jeffersons, and she always had something funny to say, I think the one thing that she should get complimented for in an award where she talked to a potted plant, and she said to it, "If you're not there on Judgment Day, I'll know you went the other way."
That's all we have for public comments.
Right? Ms. Tyler, did you have someone here today from one of your executive departments that didn't make it yesterday?
I'm not sure. Ms. Bradford had to go to another meeting down south, but I'm not sure if she is present today for the Workforce Development Board. Do we have anybody that's here? Ms. Hayes?
Honeywell.
A Honeywell. Okay.
I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Let's continue with the regular agenda items to be adopted.
Under the regular agenda items, consent agenda, there were none under the adopted resolutions and ordinance is under consent.
Ms. Chairman.
The regular agenda legislation.
You're going to have to bring the mic closer to you so that they can pick it up on the microphone.
Okay. We have Resolution 111, authorizing the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with Louisiana Film Pies LLC.
Second? The move by Councilman Corbin and second by Councilman Efferson. Please vote. Motion carries with five and two absents. Six and one absent, I'm sorry.
Stephen?
Resolution number 112, authorizing the mayor to accept a fire prevention and safety grant in the amount of $38,572 from the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Department of Homeland Security to utilize, to be utilized by the Shreveport Fire Department for the purchase of smoke alarms and literature to be distributed to the citizens of Shreveport.
The move by Councilman Flurry and second by Councilman, move by Councilman Efferson and second by Councilman... I'm sorry.
Resolution 116.
Pass with six and one absent.
Resolution 116, authorizing the mayor to dedicate the 400 block of North Halsman Avenue in honor of Mrs. Essie A. Johnson.
That's a move, Mr. Chairman.
Then move by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Flurry. Pass with six and one absent.
Under introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to October 9th, Resolution 113, authorizing the Shreveport Airport Authority to execute a permanent right-of-way and easement with Southwestern Electric Power Company. Resolution 114, authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of act of donation between the City of Shreveport and Black &amp; Nelson LLC herein after called owner and acting herein through the Jed Blackburn for the water main extension and related facilities to serve industrial business park number three and four. And Resolution 115, accepting a donation from Shreveport Green, the Kirby's Park Foundation.
Move for introduction, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. Well, Councilman Corbin have to sustain on 113.
Remove by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Efferson. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with six and one absent.
Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to October 9th, ordinance 77, amending the 2018 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 78, amending 2018 capital proven, capital improvements budget with the Shreveport Regional Airport. Ordinance 79, notifying Union Pacific and other interested parties that the city engineer and department director of public works through the office of the mayor are authorized to begin the process to... are authorized to begin the process to reopen vehicular access to Lake Street from Commerce Street to Seiport Discovery Center, including reopening vehicular access, access to crossover the Lake Street Railroad grade crossing as specified herein. And ordinance 80 to repeal and replace chapter 36 of the City of Shreveport Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to the Historic Preservation Commission and related matters. Ordinance 81 adding article six needle exchange program to chapter 50 miscellaneous offenses of the City of Shreveport Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to the authorization of a needle exchange program.
So move for introduction and additionally, I would like to move to postpone ordinance 81 to our November 13th meeting.
Good move by Councilman Everson, second by Councilman Corbin.
And do I need, is that going to do in one motion or do I need to do that in two? I'm looking at the city attorney just to make sure.
I'm sorry, Councilman Flurry was speaking to me at the time.
No, I just wanted to make sure, I did that in one motion. Do I need to do that in two motions? So do we need to introduce first and then I need to do a separate motion to postpone? Or is it okay to do it all in one motion?
Do you want to introduce it?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, you can do it in, in one motion.
Okay, yeah. And then that's the motion that, that stands.
Yeah, but I think what she's going to say, she's going, then he's going to have to do a new motion to postpone it or he can postpone it next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, either way.
For a date certain, just specify.
Yeah, I mean, but that's what I, like what I, what the motion that I just made is to introduce everything that was read as well as to postpone ordinance 81 to November 13th.
You, you can't do that in one motion, yes.
Great, yeah, so it's all one motion. So it's correct.
We're going on Jenkins. Motion carries with five, one against, one absent.
Ordinances on second reading and final passage, ordinance 74 amending the City of Shreveport Louisiana 2018 special revenue fund budget, state narcotics fund appropriating the funds authorized herein.
Sir, ma'am.
Second.
Move by Councilman Everson and second by Councilman Corbin. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with six.
Ordinance 75 has been requested by the administration to table.
Move to table ordinance 75?
I think we need to table at this point.
Okay, that's my motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Everson and second by Councilman Corbin to postpone, table, I'm sorry, table 75. Please vote. Motion carries with six and one absent.
Ordinance 76 authorizing the mayor to execute a lease of city-owned property located at 109 Spring Street, Shreveport, Louisiana 71101 in cattle parish to 107 Spring Street LLC for improvements to the subject property, including creation of additional downtown parking, public parking for purposes which benefit the public. Think this one has been asked to be postponed?
I think it's required to be read one more time.
One more time.
Yeah. So I would move to postpone to our next meeting, October 9th.
The move to postpone by Councilman Everson and second by Councilman Corbin. If there's no discussion on that, please vote. That motion carries with six and one absent. Is there any table legislation to be removed? Okay, we have no other appeals or there any reports from office of boards or committees? Madam Mayor, you have any additional communications?
I just have one. Today, we learned at the Restore Louisiana Task Force meeting that from the flood in 2016 March here in Shreveport, any municipality that had property damaged would be given 100% funding for reimbursement. I did send something to the council while I was sitting in the meeting and we were able to make sure that Shreveport got its funding back. So I wanted to make sure I could make that announcement. Initially, they told us we could only get 75%, we had to match with 25%. But now they've gotten enough money so we can get the full amount back so that we can provide some services that we were lacking.
And is that, is there still a process to vet that or is that like automatic that that's going to happen?
No, it's not automatic. We have to go in and look at each item that we submitted for property. And so I've already sent something to CAO Crawford and he'll get with staff and we'll submit, you know, what we need to submit to get our funding. Thank you.
Any council member have any additional communications? Councilman Flurry?
I'd like to acknowledge the passing of Felton Pruitt, longtime member of the Louisiana Hayride, steel guitar. He played for the first Louisiana Hayride and also for the last. And so I expressed my deepest sympathy and condolences to the Pruitt family.
Mr. Chairman, just a statement, it was called to my attention that we have six official council meetings after this meeting. And I, I was, I was, I would just hope that the next six meetings we can sort of deal with some real stuff that, I mean, items, not stuff. Items that, that would be, that would be advantageous with this experienced council because it appears that after, after the election season, we know we have three new council members. And the possibility of having six. So let's, let's try, let's try to leave a roadmap that we can have continuity as we move into the next year. So items that we feel that we need to introduce and deal with as, as this council, I'm going to suggest that we do that. Do we, do we have a, do we have a, a budget session started outlined yet, Mayor, for the, for the budget, budget season?
Yes, we do. We will submit our executive budget this weekend.
Okay.
And then I know that the council office has already sent something out to you.
It's already been sent out.
Okay, the schedule?
Yes, it has been.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
You might need to go back and check your email.
Yeah, I'm going to check your emails. But I thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
All right. That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. We, oh, well, I just wanted to mention that we did have a big announcement yesterday and the governor was in town and Oxnard LSU was a big announcement, a big impact that will be in Shreveport and in Monroe area, so just wanted to say that.
Will there be any jobs available?
There are some jobs available.
Okay, just want to know if there are. New, new positions open over there.
Quite a few.
Just FYI, as the councilman who represents that area, I don't believe I got an invitation or any notice of that happening, so I was kind of surprised by it. Not that I need to always, but yeah, it's nice to know these things. People will ask, so I got you.
And we're down, and we're down to public comments.
Okay, public comments, Mr. Roderick Gant.
Mayor, Chairman, my name is Roderick Gant. Address 9300 Newcastle Boulevard. I'm here on behalf of the youth coaches in the area, specifically football. We want to express our concern about use of facilities, access to fields to play on. We wanted to maybe get a, some advice on how can we get maybe a facility here to have all the games at one location? Right now, we have, we're having to play at different locations. We even having, some of the teams are playing in Bowser just to get games in. We would like to know if there's any room for a facility for football, maybe four fields. What that would do is that would invite more kids to play. Right now, we're having to, if we have more than one team, we're having to drive different locations just to get the games in. If we don't have the coaches available, we have to forfeit. And it's, it's deterring to the parents. The Femprize, they spoke on growing the, the economy. If we're going to do that, we can't grow with retired people. We're going to grow with the youth. And they're going to have kids and we're going to need something for those kids to do. I know Cabosa is real big in the area, but that's, my son played as well. It's a little expensive for, everyone can't afford Cabosa, everyone can't afford Dixie League, but everyone can't afford what the SPAR offers. I will say that I've coached in the YMCA. The SPAR has the most organized, structured sports program that I've participated in and they also require the most training. So in saying that, we would like to know what can we do to show you guys that the city is interested in expanding the, the youth football aspect of the sports offered here? I don't have a minute left, sir. Yeah, I mean, you're, I mean, yes, sir.
Ms. Tyler, can Ms. Regal speak to?
One, one of the things that the SPAR already provides, youth football from ages six to 16, and, and it's a very progressive program, usually maxed out with attendance and those types of things. So certainly we're interested in having that conversation and seeing what we could do to assist you. It sounds like we may have some competitive interest though in some of the same youth that are playing for you, maybe playing for us, so.
Well, I'm, I'm a coach in the SPAR.
Okay.
And right now we have Mid-South, it's another little league that's been put together here.
Right.
They're having to play their games in Bowser. They actually were teams in the SPAR. But the fact that Bowser has a complex Field of Dreams with four fields where all their ages can play one location, parents will have to split up to go try to, you know, get the kids to games. It's just a convenience aspect.
I think one of the challenges is that we, we have a full-fledged league which you're, which you're a part of and you're a coach of. It's freeing those fields up to bring in another potential league to play on those fields. So I think it's, it's a, it's a, it's an issue of access and what we have available when we have a full-time league that's playing at the same time that this other league is playing.
Yes, sir. Where, where we're calling the crossfires, we just got an email sent to us last week saying that we can't use high school fields, middle school fields to practice on because of cattle parish school. So we're limited in, you know.
We have no jurisdiction over that, okay? So we don't, that's strictly a cattle parish school board issue.
Let me, let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
I mean, my interest is with the kids.
Yes, sir.
The young people, okay? So, and I think we all, but that scenario. Do you see a scenario where this can happen in Shreveport?
Most definitely. Right now, every year, we, it's not affiliated with the SPAR, but we, we do put on a tournament. But right now we're having to go through, we, we have that tournament at Evangel on their practice fields. We have teams from Arkansas come here and play Monroe, Texas. So it's, it's marketable not just for the SPAR league. If you have it a centralized location, I believe, I think Natchitoches is even building a sports complex. That's a smaller, smaller market. But I think if it's a centralized location, you have more people inclined to participate because all their kids may be able to play. I have to turn, I have to turn away kids because I can't commit and make sure we can make all the games at different locations.
Well, again, I think administration have, have made it sort of an issue where, not an issue, but a concern that we have a league and the league is pretty matched with participation in, in our facilities. I mean, I don't think we have a multiple field facility, does it?
No, no.
So the mayor has expressed her interest of working with you.
Yes.
Let's do this, why don't you, why don't you get with the administration? And I'm going to get your number and we'll talk and see where we can, how we can help, if we can help. And then let's, let's, let's try to work it out. We hear you, again, even though we have a great league within SPAR, if we can entice more kids to get involved with wholesome activities like football or any sports activity, that's a good thing.
Yes, sir.
And if we can help enhance that, we want to do that. But I think to debate it now is not, is not, is not prudent. But if, but if you get with the administration and Ms. Regal and, and the mayor and her, and her CEO, we'll talk, you will talk. Anything, anything less than building a four field facility, we, we'll try to work with you.
Understood, yeah, I didn't come, I just want, we wanted some direction. I mean, it's, it's, it's just kind of deter parents because they don't want to split the kids up and, and we've seen it in other areas do well, especially, it's right across the water. Bowser has Field of Dreams, they have Tinsley Park. So they have the, the accessibility to put a lot of games in one area. I mean, that, that, that puts your staff not spread so thin. I mean, it has a lot of benefits outside of just kids.
Well, I'm just going to say in, in respect to the mayor, she had proven that if there's a way, there's a will.
Yes.
If there's a will, there's a way.
Absolutely.
Talk with, talk with the administration. And if it's possible, I promise you, she'll work with us.
Absolutely.
And then the council will be ready to work with you as well.
Yes, sir.
And I, I just need to piggyback and say, you know, we're all about our youth.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think, you know, you can't compare us to Bowser because we're much bigger and we have a lot more children.
Yes, yes.
And of course, we're talking about competing, I think, for the same young people. But we provide more football programs than anybody around here, so come talk to us.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Could I ask you, before you step down?
Yes, sir.
How come, who told you you couldn't use the high schools?
Well, the school board.
Liability.
Say again?
Liability. It's, it's probably a liability issue, Mr. Chairman. We, we're, we do have access to those fields, but we have, we have an agreement with the school. We have a contractual agreement with them. So it's probably a liability issue for somebody going on to their property. And if, if a child gets hurt out there without a contractual agreement, the school board is held responsible and liable. I'm just guessing.
Okay, all right.
Now, what's your league again, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, we're in the SPAR. We participate in the SPAR.
The league that you're looking to, to, is a SPAR league?
No, we're, no, no, sir, we're not looking to start a league.
Mid-South?
No, Mid-South is a league that is here as well. We're not looking to start a league, it's the SPAR coaches. Some of them wanted to make it today, but we were just trying to find a way to not have to play at Shreve, Leehead, you know, just, a lot of us have multiple teams and just.
Okay, let me be clear now because, because something has been asserted that I wasn't.
Okay.
Is that the league that you're coaching and the other coaches and your concern inquiry here today is how can we help expand fields?
Yes, sir.
It's for SPAR league teams?
Yes, sir.
No.
It's not for SPAR.
Well, that's not what I heard.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm speaking for the coaches that, we coach through the SPAR.
You're saying SPAR's teams are playing in Bowser?
No, 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 no. We had teams leave the SPAR and they're playing in Mid-South.
Oh, Mid-South is not a Shreveport league?
It is, it is established here in Shreveport, yes, sir.
But it's not, it's not playing at SPAR field?
It's not a City of Shreveport.
It's not a City of Shreveport league, no, sir.
Okay, okay.
But they are, they are taking a lot of the teams from this area and they're joining Mid-South, I guess for the convenience, but like I say, I like the SPAR. I've been coaching the SPAR for a while.
Okay.
And it's, I, I target inner-city kids as well. Then, you know, you pay attention.
We want to help kids and I'm saying, let's, let's, let's do like we said. Let's, let's talk with the administration.
Okay.
We'll speak and let's see what we are and how we can help.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you. Glad to.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. David Rogers, please.
We don't have a sports complex, but we voted that down, so we can try to look at that later.
The voters, you can't, you can't play football and basketball.
If we had a sports complex, if somebody could play football somewhere, I'd say that, nah.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Rogers.
My name is David Rogers, I'm at 828 East Kings Highway in Shreveport. Just something that came to my attention yesterday. My wife and I came downtown for lunch, we were going to the Blind Tiger and we parked in that 500 block of Spring Street that is on the riverside. Street that, um, it's on the riverside, and it didn't have any parking meters in the parking spaces. The parking spaces were marked, uh, there was one meter at the very end by Texas Street, but none of the other spaces had meters on them. So we went and had lunch, came back, and we had a parking ticket, and the vehicle in front of us had a parking ticket. But there was, so I looked at the ticket and it said they could pay it in person or by the app, and so I went to the office to pay the ticket and asked the person there how someone was supposed to know that you can't park in that spot because there's no signage saying that you have, you can park there only if you use the app, there's no signage at all. And they told me that the only way you could park legally was to pay through an app, but I mean, there's no notice. So it's, I'm saying this, it's not about me, it's only ten dollars, uh, and they waived that fine, but it's about visitors that come to the city, they don't know this, um, and I'm just asking if, um, maybe the city or someone in charge of the parking could put up some signage to let people know that you can only park in non-metered spaces with the app, and until they get the signs up, just to waive those spaces, or at least waive it for out-of-state vehicles.
And I had a chance to talk to Mr. Rogers earlier, I wanted to thank him for coming down and sharing his concern, um, but we did have a meeting of the B four committee where we addressed some similar concerns with the, um, the parking, uh, the group that manages the parking for downtown, and they actually do have some changes in the works for some more meters, some more signage, some painting of the curbs, and some things that are in the works right now, um, so hopefully those things are gonna be, um, the answer to, to your concern today, um, but certainly we will reach out to them and share your concern directly as well.
Yeah. But until that comes into effect, is there any way that the un-metered spaces not be ticketed?
Yeah, let me.
Well, they are metered, they, they just may not have a, they are metered by the app, that is, that is what the meter is.
If there's a sign up there that has an app, it is metered, if there's no sign, is that what you're saying, there's nothing?
I've got a picture of it, if you'd like to see.
Downtown Development Authority, as the councilman said, they, they're our management group for all parking enforcement and, and rules and regulations, and we'll certainly have that conversation with them, I was in the, the B four meeting that the councilman's talking about as well, if you give me your name and number when you leave here, we'll certainly see what we can do, but again, they're our management agency for that, we don't actually facilitate that.
We don't.
Right.
But we'll contact them and make sure that, um, your concern is addressed, if you'll see us afterward, because we don't do it ourselves, we do, uh, do it through Downtown Development Authority, and we'll be glad to facilitate that for you.
Sure, and, and to make myself clear, it's, it's not about the meters that have, or where they're, where they're metered and it's got a sticker on it that says you can pay by app here if you want to, and tells you the zone and stuff.
Sure.
These are spaces that have no meters.
Right.
So there's no notice on the parking spot at all.
Okay, well, we will contact the D D A and let them know that.
That, you know, we've talked about the Rebel and Film Prize coming up, and the block headed south immediately, it's on Market Street immediately before Festival Plaza, has a lot of spaces just like that.
Okay.
And so next week, when the Rebel, or, I guess this week, when the Rebel starts.
Yes.
There'll be people coming in for lunch, and if you give them tickets, you know, if they're a visitor, they may not come back.
Sure, yeah.
Well, let us get with the agency because we don't do it from the city, but we do have an agency that does it, and we will make sure that that doesn't happen, we'll talk with them.
Mr. Rogers.
Thank you.
Uh, how much did your ticket cost?
It was only ten dollars.
Ten dollars?
And it was waived?
It was waived, yeah, that's.
It's zero dollars.
Yeah, I, I'm not worried about that, that's not why I'm here.
No, I, I was just kinda calculating what your meal costs and what your ticket costs. I wanted to invite you to come to Southern Hills, we don't have any meters.
We may do that.
Um, I, I was curious about, it, now, now that I'm thinking about where the space is, I wonder if it may be, you know, there were two spaces that were part of a deal from many moons ago that were kind of not available for public parking because of the previous owner of that building had traded them for some sort of electrical right-of-way or something, I think that is no longer in place because that person no longer owns that building, um, and I wonder if it may be one of those spaces, you know where I'm talking about?
Hollandhead.
Hollandhead, I got you.
Those are right there where you described, I bet it might be one of those, which might be, which is a legitimate point of confusion, 'cause those may have never had a post, you know, so that could be the, a special circumstance, but certainly we'll look into it either way.
Well, yeah, the where I parked was in front of the vacant lot.
So on the opposite side of the street.
It's on the southeast corner where there's that vacant lot.
Oh, okay, okay, so that's not where I parked.
So, 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 Mr. Rogers, so in your description, did you assume that there was free parking zone?
Yes.
Okay. In, in, in the prime part of downtown, you thought it was a pre, I mean, it is, it appeared to be a pre, a free parking zone.
Yes.
Okay, there's no free parking downtown.
Well, I mean, but, but you understand this.
Except for nights and weekends.
I do, and that's, that's why we waived it, we'll, we'll certainly take it up, we've got an agency that monitors that.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you sharing it.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
That's it?
Yes.
Well, if there's nothing else from nobody else, this means a joint.